We continue. I'll invite the deputations to speak. Each deputation and individual attending will have three minutes speaking time. I'd like to remind you that your submissions or oral presentations will not be covered by Legislative Council powers and privileges, cap 3, aid to safeguards and exemptions. So let's invite the first speaker, Mr. Tan Zihui. Chairman, I need to express regret. On 15th of December last year, I had mentioned to the officials present that CE had wanted to talk to youth about securing land for housing. After expressing opinion, I think the officials did not follow up. And then the government is now resuming land. And a lot of young people write in Facebook saying that there's 4,000 hectares of land that's not been used. So that's my first regret. And moving on, I'd like to ask the Development Bureau officials, when did they know? When did they know his family has land in the northeast? That means these policy bureau officials, if they were aware, did they remind him? Did they? Were they influenced by him? If the above occurred, that is, they were... Then they might have been abetting a plan that would have possible collusion with the private sector. So this development plan needs to be done all over again, including consultation. We would like to see a bottom-up, democratic, no collusion, clean plan. There shouldn't be doubt, ambiguity. So I'd like the officials to respond. When were they aware that Paul Chan or his family had land holdings? And I'd like to quote from the Bible. There are some standards, but I'm not sure if he had read chapter 6, "Ill-gotten gains." If I used improper means, how can that be considered clean? "If the citizen's lies, so I need to strike you." So I hope. Ms. Secretary Chan. Okay, time's up. Next, Mr. Lei Mingzha. Our CE likes to use youth as an excuse to promote the N E N T, saying that 10 years hence, home will be in the northeast. Then, if you want to use us as an excuse, don't you need to listen to us? A young person, even if it's hard to afford housing, I still oppose this plan because I don't want my children to ask me, "Where did our land come from?" I can't answer. I can't tell my daughter that the government destroyed households, destroyed agricultural land to... I can't tell my children this. If you ask the young people, they have reservations. You can see the young people in the last two days, they oppose the N E N T plan because our home is not just the four walls surrounding, comprising 400 feet. Actually, we should have a general referendum, whether they really support this home destroying plan. Actually, it doesn't have a land shortage, it's just unequal distribution. Some 50% of people live in government housing and they only make up 21% of land. But for small houses, they take up 46% of land, even though they only house 7% of the people. So after taking away from roads, slopes, there are some 30-odd hectares and you're saying there's still some land that can't be used. So why don't you just tell us directly how much land can be built, can be used to build in the downtown area? You also refer to the 1,200 rural development small house land. So we only have 100-odd hectares for housing. So this is just like the Old Testament, where the rich man has lots of cattle, but he still wants to grab from the poor. So don't use, there's no time as an excuse. We have a large golf course that is lying available. Just now, the speaker had referred to Micah verse 6. So you had actually said last year that secretaries have to be whiter than white. So secretary, I think you should resign.
Next one, please. Mr. Chan Shi, Secretary, members, good afternoon. About the revised N E N T plan, our society believes that the government should shelve this enhanced new town development model. It should use the idle land and also brownfield sites to build housing and to take this opportunity to revise the government's narrow-minded policies. I hope that the government can conserve rural land and draw up a policy to preserve agriculture in Hong Kong. Hong Kong's policy is now led by property development, is a narrow perspective, and many scholars have discussed this subject and said that it is land can be used to create a community with local characteristics. Our society has conducted some surveys on the history of the N T and our conclusion is that the rural area is full of vibrancy with long history and farmers have also accumulated much wisdom in how to live. And we have a very many stories of loving and cordial relationships among community residents. So under this kind of planning, we would not be able to create a good community and on the contrary, you are wiping out the homes of many people. And this kind of devastation cannot be made up by any kind of compensatory measures. During the past few days, many farmers have shared their stories about how they have built their homes there and raised a family there. And they've, they are working hard on farm land and farming and build a farming community. Now, this latest proposal is turning these people into numbers, compensation figures, and you are ignoring the many diversified lifestyle in these areas that needs to be preserved. In Taiwan, there is a scholar called Chan Keh Nam and he has, his writings have great influence on the Taiwan community. And he said that meaningful community life includes the following nine factors. First, good rich natural resources, good view or landscape, comfortable living environment, traditions with a good, good traditions and good arts communities and so on. Time's up. Next one, Ms. Lette Chee Wong Shiu Yen. Hong Kong was originally a fishing village and our population has grown over time and we are now a international financial center. And if we want to have development, we need land. So unavoidably, we have to increase land supply. And some people say that the population will not grow as fast as what the government has projected. I think it's a matter of time. Those with, who are forward-looking, we know that we need time to do, to get things developed and we have to make good preparations for our future development. Now, if we want to develop a place, northeast or golf course and a lot of creeps, nuisance will be created and the animal life there will be affected and there will be insects and so on. So if residents are not relocated, these insects and cockroaches may cause nuisance to the residents and they would also do harm to agricultural produce. Now, there have been also been reports that there is heavy metal underground in northeast and this shows that the northeastern part is not suitable for farming. And some people told me that for imported vegetables, inspections have to be made. Now, recently, the Fanning Golf Court and the CE's villa have, have been, will be included in the future development. There have been talks about that, but I find it regrettable, this move. Now, the golf course in Fanning is one of the rare golfing courses in Hong Kong for international matches and a lot of international matches are held here. So I don't think we should demolish it and we shouldn't find another place to build another golfing range. Now, for cycling and golfing, they're not very common, but I think we have to respect every kind of sport and these sports are available for all. Now, as for the CE's villa, it has a history of over 80 years. I think we have to study whether it should be preserved and conserved. Secretary, finally, I would like to say that I have every sympathy for you because recently you have been answering questions on your wife and your wife's company and you don't have a real beneficial interest in all these matters. But I think everyone is criticizing you out of their very strong emotions on these matters. Now, I understand that if you are really keen on making money, you wouldn't have joined the government as a secretary. So I believe that you are sincere in serving the community. I hope that you would not give up and get frustrated. Thank you. Next one. Can I ask the secretary to take a look and look this way first? I want to share this with Brother Paul Chan. And then you quoted from the school anthem of the New Asia College and the Bible. And as for the school anthem, I think a lot of media have reported on that. I want to talk about the Book of Micah in the Bible. Whether you have read through the whole book or just one verse. In chapter 2, verse 2, the Book of Micah talks about people who are greedy and they're snatching away people's, other people's properties. And then in chapter 3, verse 1, and then it says that,[848.48][849.12]"Don't you know what fairness and justice is? And you are trying to deprive the poor of their possessions." So the whole book has to do with the ancient prophet telling or issuing a warning to the rich people, saying that they are unjust and they are snatching away other people's properties and land. And the whole book is full of curses towards these rich people. So in the middle, and they, and the prophet urges them to act justly and to do mercy and to walk humbly with the Lord. So the prophet is condemning people and bustling for their own good. Well, I have another verse of the Bible to share with you. In Kings, the Book of Kings, there is a story about this king, Aha. There is a civilian called Nabar and Aha wanted to possess for his own this Nabar's grave, this grapeyard. And then he said that he, "I would exchange a piece of land in return for your grapeyard and/or I would pay you in cash." And then this Nabar said that, "I don't want to give you my ancestors' land." And the king was not unhappy and the king sent his wife to deal with the matter. And ultimately, the wife used a smearing tactics and to incite the public to stone the grapeyard owner to death. So prophets in the book, in the Bible refer to people who speak the words of the Lord and the prophet said that you are committing a crime, a sin here. And then Elijah said to the king directly, said that you are snatching away other people's properties and you are committing a sin. And then the king ultimately got penalized for his sin. So I want to tell Brother Paul Chan, if you earn the whole world and you are having your life taken away from you, what good does it do? Next one, Ms. Emily Wong. I don't support N E N T project. It's not that I don't support providing housing people, providing housing to people, increasing land supply or developing creative industries. It's just that that the government is insisting on its own way and you have never provided a platform for us to discuss a matter thoroughly and you don't have any policies at all. Hong Kong doesn't have any land policy, no population policy, no farming policy, no policy on creative industries. So without these policies, what will be the outcome? Policies are the foundations on which to build our society. Now, if we don't have a foundation, it's like a fool building his land, his house on a piece of sandy land. You would not build your house on sand. And you are just here to implement the policies and then the other people have to take the blame or the responsibility for your very wrong policies. Of course, some people are going to benefit from what you're doing, but after, since the handover and we've, we are bearing the consequence of many mistaken policies. So why are you embarking on the path of blindly developing different areas? And a lot of property developers have created deep-seated social problems. I may pay my mortgage in 10 years, 10 to 20 years' time for my flat, but if you are pressing ahead with your policies, then the consequence will have to be brought on a number of generations afterward. And there is also this group of farmers who are, is a source of our food supply. They would be evacuated from their home, they would become refugees. And actually, they don't need your help, they don't need your compensation and they don't care about relocation. What they need is just a piece of land for them to farm, to live and work happily. And actually, this group of farmers can help us secure a good source of food supply for us. They are a good example of having self-sufficiency among us and they are a group contributing much to our society. But it seems that the government is turning a blind eye to what they've done and just, they are just offering some compensation to them. Now, in the last decade, we built development areas and in this era, we need to tackle food problems. We can't just focus on property, property all the time. Next one, Ms. Wong Shiu Ping. Good afternoon, members, I'm Wong Shiu Ping. Because of the X R L, my house and my well has been adversely affected. I've made my point over and over again, but nobody is paying attention to what I said. My potted flowers have died because of this. I don't know what to do. Oh, sorry, I'm not very articulate. I'm in dire situation. I don't know what I can do further. Well, they've never come to visit my home. I've been here in this chamber for a number of times. Well, I don't know how to express myself because I didn't receive a lot of education. My flowers are dying, are withering. Well, I don't know how to express my feelings or myself. I'm a farmer and my plants are dying. I don't have a good water supply. You see, they are half-dying or they're, they're half-alive and half-dead, just like myself. My well has dried up and there are cracks in my home and the X R L company says that it has nothing to do with them. I've made my comments many times. I don't know where to turn to, to complain. My plants have all died and I get zero compensation. I really don't know how to express myself, myself. And I don't get any income at all for the past year and there are cracks in my house, no water anymore in my well. Members have promised to help me, but you are not doing that. I'm hopeless, in a hopeless situation. I'm not very articulate. While you've talked about the problem with your plant, but what we are focusing today is N E N T development project, the revised proposal. Have you got any other comments on that front? And you are ignoring us. You are part of the government. The government turns a blind eye to our plight.
I have no income for a whole year. We are in the northeast. Will that affect us? West Rail, you see? You've given us a lot of hope, but now we're totally disappointed. The discussion topic is more or less the same. We don't know how to express ourselves. We have no power, no money. You are educated, we're not educated. We don't know where to complain. We're talking about northwest, we're closest to the northwest. Nobody can help me. West Rail is a government project. The express rail, high-speed rail. Okay. Government officials have heard you, so they might respond to you. Next, Mr. Lee Duk-sung.
I, uh... You can sit. Mr. Lee, I rear carp, carp fish. There's a tunnel there and it affects a water table by a half. So the high-speed rail has said they would monitor the situation, but they haven't resolved the issue. My carp are my livelihood, but they're just stalling. There's no response. I just want you to help. Just help us negotiate. And you have an impact on the farmers, but you're only stalling. You are not sincere in solving the problem. Do you really want to sacrifice us? If it's for the benefit of Hong Kong, but now you're affecting the villagers, you should help us resolve our livelihood issues. Thank you. Next, Ms. Lei Liu Zhan.
I have lived in Ngaut Hamei some two, three decades, but the high-speed railway is affecting us. It makes us unhappy and the environment... Our livelihood is now in the hands of private developers and senior officials. We are very unhappy and we... You are now drilling underneath our village. You are affecting our environment, there's noise. The house I live in, there's a tunnel beneath it. Shouldn't I get some compensation? So my whole lifetime life savings are invested in the house and it's being undermined right now, literally, going beneath my house. I have no where to complain. They want statistics, figures. They want me to describe the impact. Well, when it runs underneath my house, I'm not compensated, but my property values decrease, my life savings decrease. So what should I do? Where should I seek redress? Mr. Paul Chan?
You're using our land without any concern for our feelings. We're unhappy, we don't know where to complain. What can I do? I'd like Mr. Paul Chan to respond because underneath my small village house, right beneath my house, and I lodged complaints and I asked around, but there was no response. What can I do, Mr. Chan? Our hearing is about the N T northeast. I understand that a lot of speakers will talk about Ngaut Hamei. I'd like you to share your experience and the officials perhaps can learn from your experience and how it would be relevant to N T, N E. The topic is about the northeast planning. If you have views, please use your three minutes. And our legislators would like to hear your views. So next, Mr.
Mister Zhou Guanyin.
I'm from Au Tam Mai. Just now, developing N E aside from uh the high-speed rail, there's also uh east rail that goes through Kudong. Our whole, we have the west rail and the high-speed rail. So after construction work starts, it uh our water table is falling. Their construction uh scale is very uh large. It's polluting our water source. Uh they are conducting explosions on the slopes. Our village is now being affected by this plan. The fish farmers don't have a water. The housing, the uh the water table and the soil erosion has caused cracks in houses. We've had, we lodged complaints, we go to the government offices, they don't, they ignore us. So are we not human? We've complained so many times. But no, there has been no government department uh helping us out. But every day we have to endure explosions. We've had the police uh had to resolve disputes because there have been fights over water. The fights have broken out because of uh disputes over water use. So how are we to go to live? They're destroying our ecology, they're destroying our houses. We're not against development. We are good citizens. We're not a- asking for handouts or social security, but they are affecting us. But they want us to prove it with ex- but they want us to have experts prove it. And it can be appealed all the way. So how are we going to prove our case? The government's basic goal should be to preserve the life and property of its citizens. If they can't do this, how can we support the government? We're very, very angry. Next, Miss Law Chiu San.
Are you going to speak, Miss Law? I think the high-speed rail is a ver- it's a big nuisance. Because in the past we didn't have centipedes in the past. But now we see large centipedes. And these might sting people. And the houses are cracked and there's nowhere to complain. Uh nobody, people ignore us. It's now like a deserted village. Uh this needs to be addressed. You are destroying villages. Will we have villages in the future? Will we have villages in the future? Uh it's meaningless. We won't have any more village houses. Anything to add? No? Thank you. Mister Gok Tsi Seung.
Because of the high-speed rail net railway, we realized that the wells were drying up. And over the years, we're like clowns. Uh I don't like coming here because I don't know how to speak. I'm just a farmer. I had uh uh reared edible fish in, starting from nineteen eighty-three. Now I rear carp and we're like clowns. Uh they, this department says they'll help us, that department says they'll help us, and we go here and there. But there's no progress. My wells have dried up uh some fifty percent in the last year or two. Every year I use two thousand dollars electricity. So I've, my income has dropped substantially. Because I need to use uh electricity pumps to pump water. So I have uh extra utility expenses. So the government should take note of this. The high-speed rail. They haven't issued compensation or restored the water source. Because I'm right on top of their alignment. So the shallow wells have no more water. The deep well has only half the water capacity.
I'm worried whether we will be able to receive C S S A. If that can be done, then that's marginally okay, but I don't want to do that. I hope that you can help us. How to assist us? Please pay attention to the problems we're facing in Au Tam Mai within the um alignment of the X R L. That's all I want to say. Next one. Mister Chen Wei Ming, next. Is it working now?
I'm from Martine Park Village. I am against senior government officials developing new areas. You are endangering our health. You are cutting away all the um fruit-bearing trees. And health is of mu- utmost importance. You are making huge profits together with the property developers before us. We are forced out of our home and we don't have a way to make a living. Did you, have you heard what I said? Paul Chan. The government has long been oppressing the farmers. And it's because of this, we are seeing so much waste produced in the city. Farming is a recycling uh activity. The produce that we produce are very good. For the Chinese people, we need cereals, vegetables, fruit. We've been eating these over thousands of years. We're not like the U S. Because you've been suppressing the agricultural activities for a long time. That's why we end up with so such a big problem on our wasteland today. Well, chemical fertilizers are not good. We would adopt a recycling pattern and then we would use the um decomposed materials as fertilizers for our farmland. We are very poor people. Senior government officials. You are destroying our farmland and our houses. Well, all over the world, countries have agricultural policies. But then Hong Kong is such a developed city, why don't we have an agricultural policy as well? Well, your time's up. The next one, please. Mister Feng Xi Kang. I'm also going to talk about Au Tam Mai. I was born in Au Tam Mai. Um is my root, so to speak. The building of the X R L will uproot me and my home. Um the works proceed without consulting the villagers and then when problems arise, they are not facing them. And they're trying to shy away from their responsibility. The tun- the work on the tunnel is being um conducted and the well is drying up. And if the second tunnel um is going to be built, then the problem is on- only going to aggravate. And they told us that we are too far away from the X R L, one point five K M away. But then if well, let's not forget the Au Tam Mai is like a basin uh in topography. And we share the water resources there. We have the right to the water resources there. And the with the building of X R L is taking away our water supply source. So how can we continue with our farming practice to earn an income? So I hope that the X R L can um tackle uh our problems. Next one. Miss Wong Kui Lan.
I'm also from Au Tam Mai. I've lived here for over sixty years. So well, can you uh stop for a while? Sorry, uh Mister, uh but uh so now. Uh Miss Wong, uh can you pe- please hold for a while? Mister Chen. Well, the rules are that we'll, each speaker will be given three minutes. Mister Chen. Sorry, speaker not coming through. Sorry, speaker not coming through. Mister Chen, can you uh please listen to me? Well, please don't um speak anymore. Sorry, speaker not coming through. Yes, we've heard your views, Mister Chen. Can you please um follow the rules here? When others are speaking, please don't stand in the way. Sorry, speaker not coming through. Mister Chen, if you continue like that, there is no way that we can continue with the meeting. Or else I might have you ask you to step out. All right? Now let's uh ask Mister Wong Kui Lan. I've lived in Au Tam Mai for some sixty years. Now the S R L is here to drill a tunnel. And the um well water has been adversely affected. So I hope that the X R L can uh give us back our water supply. Without water, well, there is no way then that we can go and live in. We have to drink water, we have to irrigate. The tunnel actually passes through uh the part beneath my well. So please give us back our water supply or water resources. Anything to add from you? No? Next one. Mister Lau Su Chong. I'm also from Au Tam Mai. Um well, please speak to the mic. Uh please help him a bit. Sorry, please continue. I'm also from Au Tam Mai. The west rail or the X R L's uh construction works after they have commenced and it has adversely affected the water supply. And I hope that somebody can fix the problem for us. I want to have um water supply like we used to to have in the past. This is my simple request. Nothing to add? All right, next one. Mister Lau Kam Wei.
Plus, my um experiences like that in N T and Y villages. Uh I have a a house, I live in a house built by my father and in nineteen uh that was that was demolished uh and I reported to the police. And after the police made an investigation, the police told me because Lan's department uh said that there was insufficient um evidence, so no prosecution would be made. But then the people, the culprits were caught uh red-handed. I don't know why they said that there was insufficient evidence. The Hong Kong police also told me that if you wanted to find out why, perhaps you can ask a lawyer to write into the D F J to seek an explanation. Well, how can I find a lawyer? I don't have the money to um hire a lawyer. Now, as for the water quality or water wells, I have a well which is um outside a distance of three hundred meters from the Shuzhang area. I used it to uh raise chicken and I used a lot of water, but then um that was stopped some time ago. And recently, a a couple of years ago, I ducked something up from the bottom of the well, this artifact. And when we um the, when we tried to um put a a a a pump or into the in into the well, then there was this uh, we found that there was this uh this uh bucket. And because the well dried up a couple of years ago, uh because of the X R L construction, so I was able to retrieve this artifact of mine, dropped down there a few years ago. Next one, Mister Chen, Miss Chen Ken.
I want to use this analogy. Say, if the one next to you is doing renovation work, if he uh does a damage to your house, your neighbor will come to you to say sorry immediately and I try to uh make amends or try to offer compensation. But then in Hong Kong, whenever there are major construction works like the X R L or other development projects of major companies, um these development projects may uh be very important to the entire economy, but they just uh take care of their own interests and they don't care about those affected. Well, for our village and our villages are affected, but no um business conglomerate or the relevant government official will come to apologize to us for the impact they create on us or offer any uh compensation at all. So why is it always that the villagers' um interest have to be sacrificed in major development projects? For members of the community, uh they will not know about these development projects if they didn't deliberately try to find out. But when, it's only when there are problems that we are notified of these um major development projects. The villages have been chasing after the uh developers for
The villagers have been chasing after the developers for them to take remedial measures. They are being ignored. I don't understand the kind of consultations that you've been undertaking. What good does it serve? No matter how much we are against it, then the XRL turns a deaf ear to our requests. Your development is adversely affecting people's lives and livelihood. Nobody comes out to make an apology and nobody comes out to say what kind of remedial measures will be undertaken. The same goes to the Chao Yun, Chun villages. I don't know why this kind of situation continues or persists. Next one, Ms. Tang Shiu-Kuan. Good afternoon. I'm from Altamay. Because of the XRL, the construction works, we are adversely affected. The houses are cracked, the roads are cracked. And the company says that these cracks have nothing to do with them. Well, for a person in my age, we should lead more comfortable life and we should take care of the family. Now, just like today, I came here, I couldn't cook a meal for my children. So our lives are adversely affected. And there's no way then we can live, lead a comfortable life. Well, I've never been in this kind of institution before, in the council before. And your staff said that the damage to our houses, our roads, our, the brakes and so on and so forth has nothing to do with them, their construction works. Now, if somebody gets injured, what is going, what remedial measures can be undertaken? The senior government officials and legislature members have visited us, but there have never been any response from them.
Oh, thank you. Next. Mr. Law Mo Yihin. I think don't need to add, I think everything has been said. I just want High-Speed Rail to address our questions. They always say it's not, it's not their problem. It wasn't, I hope that there shouldn't be Northeast Development, it affects ecology. Next. Mr. O San-Jung. I'm also from Altamay. I lived there for fifty years. And I use the water there to grow flowers, vegetables and rear fish. Ever since the High-Speed Rail started work in 2011, the flowers, vegetables, fish don't have enough water. The High-Speed Rail, they ignore the villagers. If they don't approve, we will surround their construction site. Next. Mr. Zhang La Bin. I'm a member of Altamay Concern Group. You might think it's not related to Northeast Development, but it's actually similar, that the government has ignored a group of people's interests and needs. You can see Altamay villages, a disadvantaged group. They have low education, they engage in agriculture, similar to the Northeast. The EIA report didn't say that would have such a large impact. Their houses are cracked, their water table has disappeared. They rely on that, they rely on well water. But ever since the work started in 2010, the MTR had been negotiating with them. And at the end of May, the MTR said they did not apply for compensation and required them to go through the procedures once more. So the government hasn't done anything. The Highways Department should monitor the works. So they have the obligation to speak up, to pressure the MTRC. If you look at the Northeast Development, a lot of residents there are concerned. What will happen after planning and during consultation? They weren't told anything. So they might have different opinions, some support development, some say they won't relocate. So by the third stage of consultation, why do we still have the same slogans? When a site was selected, they should choose development sites very carefully. We shouldn't still have people shouting slogans. If you look at the 2030 Plan, it mentioned Gudong North, Fun Fanning North, but not the golf course or fallow land, short-term lease land. Why do they insist on developing Gudong North? So we feel the government should announce or disclose the site's selection criteria. They should know why it was chosen. And we hope that the government can hear the villagers. It can serve as a reference. Mr. Liu Hong-Gate. Mr. Liu, you can sit down. I'd like to ask, do we have the High-Speed Rail officials here? Today, the discussion is about the Northeast. It doesn't matter. I'd like to tell Mr. Paul Chan the situation in Altamay. The High-Speed rail officials, they met with the, they said they had a close marching of nine walls in Altamay with the village chief. Well, was there financial compensation? Assuming there was compensation, I'm aware that there were two or more communal wells. What is a communal well? That is... That is, I have a share and other villagers have a share in the well. If there was compensation, I should get a share. There should be a report. So I'd like to tell Mr. Paul Chan, when you resume the Northeast, you need to take care of villagers' needs, okay? I'd like to see how many legislators have questions. We have four. Tan Yun-Han, love waves. Emily Lau, Fernando Jung, Albert Chan. Five minutes? Ms. Emily Lau. Thank you for coming to the Legislative Council. Today, we're talking about NT Northeast. But a lot of individuals are talking about Altamay. In previous occasions, we had this situation, even though Mr. Paul Chan is not directly responsible. This is a question for Zhang Bing-Lang and MTRC. The speakers have been to ombudsman, but the issue is not resolved. So if this secretary wishes to speak, he can do so. This issue has dragged on for so long. We need to help the residents to deal with this seriously. I think the secretary or the Complaints Division needs to follow up. We already have a case. We won't be able to help them. So I hope after the meeting, the secretary can liaise with the Complaints Division and check up on the latest situation. We need to follow up. Mr. Chairman. As the speakers, do you think they got nothing better to do? They have to come to Central? It is obvious that their problems aren't resolved. They have no water, how can they farm? This might not be directly related, but if their livelihood is affected, then other residents would be similarly concerned. Why should it linger so long? What kind of scientific proof do you want? How are they going to provide that? The officials and MTRC are bullying. They're saying they're going to surround your construction site. And I think Mr. Chan will tell Zhang Bing-Lang that if they are going to surround your construction site, how can you work? We don't need to occupy Central, we just need to occupy the construction site. So I will participate. They need to follow this up with the Complaints Division. So, Mr. Chen, can you respond? Secretary for Development. As Emily Lau said, the High-Speed Rail Bureau is Transport Housing Bureau. I have taken note of what has been said. We will liaise with the Transport Housing Bureau and relay your concerns. So the secretary will follow up with the Complaints Division to see if the villagers have time. Our secretary can handle their complaint. They each have their own case. They can liaise with our staff and they can be dealt with together. The residents have taken a long trip to attend this meeting. We need to help them. We need to take note of their case. Thank you, Chairman. Yes, so we'll see whether our staff can help out. Next. Ms. Tan Yun-Han. We have thirty-odd deputations and some twenty other of them come from Altamay. I think they are cornered. I think everybody is concerned about livelihood. When the High-Speed Rail was built, is being built, the water is being affected. I asked the villagers, there's chlorine in the water and the plants will die. They need natural water source. They raised a lot of good questions. I'd like to tell the villagers, does the government have an agricultural policy? If there was, they wouldn't have this problem. The construction brings about so many problems. So I asked what's happening. They think we're officials, we're just legislators, but they're very angry. So if they've been to legislature before, legislators have been to their village, and it's all in vain. Let's, if we look at the issue from their perspective, we have twenty-odd speakers from Altamay. You should... So I suggest that we immediately hold a meeting with MTRC. We don't need to wait after summer recess. I agree with the speaker. Mr. Zhang La Bin said this... The NT, NE residents are very concerned because they can see what's happening elsewhere. So in the future, you will face a lot of problems. And I'd like to tell our friends, we'd like to hear all the views.
We've got another meeting on the 31st. Well, we've got two meetings on 30th and 31st respectively. Many people will come to express their views. The project is going to affect the whole of NE, actually, and following NE NT is Hongshiqiu. So if the government doesn't have any good policies yet and has not concluded from the experience of Altamay, it should not rush that long into the project. So we should take reference from Altamay. Thank you for traveling all the way from Altamay to here to express your views. Well, a year ago, when they were here, I was not in legislature, I wasn't a member. So as legislators, I think we should handle it. And I agree with Emily Lau that we should not wait till the summer, after the summer recess. Let's try to do something in the interim period. And the XRL construction work proposal was passed in the last term of legislature, but as incumbent legislators, I think we should deal with the matter. Well, please stay quiet. The Complaints Division. Well, let's see which members are interested to join in the discussions and follow up on the matter. And then we will ask the Complaints Division to issue a circular to invite members to join in a group to follow up on the matter. Well, we hope that members can lend your support to the villagers. Next one, Dr. Fernando Jung. Well, I'd like to thank deputations for coming over for the Altamay problem. It shows precisely that after an approval was given to a certain project, it was dubious as to whether the relevant parties are taking care of the needs of the affected villagers or residents. Would they adopt a people-oriented approach in the construction works? Maybe it's all empty talk. So Chairman, I'm concerned. So Chairman, I'm concerned about the problems faced by residents in this piece of land, especially the farmers. Mr. Au just now said clearly that farmers have to work on the farmland. They have to understand the nature, the soil nature of the land, and they have to nurture the land and they have to do infrastructure and to build cell network. And it takes three, five years or even longer. So Mr. Au has been there for three generations. And sometimes, some families are there for four generations. So you are chanting slogans again like people-oriented and approach to develop the area. But in fact, you are destroying the original rural way of living. And you are taking away from them their means of making a living. Now you are paying out an excruciating payment of $600,000 and you have to settle, settle the problem with that. That, so secretary, how are you going to respond to their request? Farmland is the lifeblood of the farmers. And taking away their farmland is like killing the farmers. So secretary, how do you respond to, any response to this demand? Perhaps I'll defer to the Director of Planning to talk about why is it no removal or no demolishing can be done in certain areas? On the selection of locations in the 90s in the Strategy Development Plan, we've selected the NE NT. And in 1998, we conducted a study to ascertain that this is feasible. Well, in the interest of time, please ask not to recite history. Well, I just want to tell you why NE NT was chosen. And it was, it's going to be built on the Shangshou Fanning New Towns. You don't have to explain why you selected the sites. Please respond to the requests or the demands of the farmers. You don't have to tell me the history, why the location was selected. But people are telling you that you are actually killing them, taking away their lives by taking, taking away their farmland. So what's your response? So if the farmland belongs to the farmer, then there will be compensation. And real farmers, according to existing policies, will try to find land for them to have agricultural rehabilitation. And they can apply to the Land Department to build a house with an area of 400 square feet, 17 feet in height to build, to put in their farming tools. And all the greenery and the seeds on the farmland, there will be a very complete compensation mechanism. And we are also liaising with the AFCD and they promised that they would proactively approach the affected farmers to help identify suitable farmland for them and they will provide all the technical support they need. And they would render all kinds of assistance to the farmers. Chairman, Kutong South. This plot has actually been taken up by property developers. A lot of it is now fallow. Well, it's useless to ask the farmers to approach the property developers to negotiate for the land to be used as farmland. Now, if you're undertaking a major development project like this and you are not doing a social impact assessment, that's strange. Well, actually, social impact assessment is a norm in the international community. So secretary, when are you going to introduce social impact assessment study? At an earlier development panel meeting. And we are working together with the Food and Health Bureau. Working on measures to facilitate farmers to do agricultural rehabilitation. Now, we've conducted three PE exercises for the NE NT and there is no way that we can go back and consult afresh. No, that can't be done. Next one, Mr. Albert Chan, Chairman. In the past two decades, the government is using development as an excuse to wipe out villagers, the livelihood of farmers. I'm infuriated. Chitlapcock Airport. And you have flattened the Chitlapcock Island and a few households were relocated. And Mr. Wong, Uncle Wong, he was relocated to Yunnlong and he, and he passed away because he had a lung problem with the very poor quality in air quality in Yunnlong. Even the dog passed away, died because it refused to drink and eat after it was relocated. So so such relocation exercises may be fatal for people and animals alike. For Wa Ke, the removal of Wa Ke, that was mishandled too. And one of the bosses jumped to his death too. And a boss was was forced to take up the job of a security guard and he couldn't adjust to his new job and he also committed suicide. Same goes to Au Tammei. In the six days in Au Tammei, the well was still full of water. It had not dried up. Actually, I wrote three times to the MTRCL and it didn't admit that it was responsible for that problem. You are cutting off the source of water supply for these villages and the MTRCL refuses to admit, respond, to, to be held responsible for it. And the government is turning also a blind eye to the issue. And the secretary, you are earning nineteen times the profit of your original purchase price of the land. And for these villages in Au Tammei, they are affected and they have the very well-reputed fish ponds for calves. And these people lead a very simple life, farming and rearing fish. And now the government is trying to wipe out the village. Well, earlier, I visited the village and I asked the villagers to block the MTRCL from coming in to do construction works. Well, in the past, there were construction works going on in Yunnlong and that led to some cracks in the houses and the property developers were willing to conduct an assessment of the damage and they were willing to make some compensation and help you improve your living conditions. But the MTRCL refused to take responsibility. And the government is sitting with its arms folded, doing nothing. So Au Tammei villagers, I'm going to support you. You have given all the opportunities for MTRCL to make amends, but they didn't do so. And they wouldn't want to apply for CSA either. So perhaps after today, well, you can ask legislators to join you in blocking the way to their construction sites. Now, I don't think the MTRCL will do the same thing to the villages or the land owned by Hao Qi Kun or La Wang Fat. Without these big bosses' approval, the MTRCL would not even dare to venture into the villages. Well, it's just that because you are the underprivileged group that they, that you are being short-changed and you are being bullied. Now, in building the West Rail stations, the MTRCL are also ignoring the problems that they are created in the construction works. So they, well, there was, for the Wa Ke bosses are committing suicide, there was a very small article in the media. The government netted a lot of money after resumption of land and property developers are making huge profits. But the grassroots are suffering tremendously. So I don't want the mistake made at Chitlapcock to be repeated. And the villagers of Au Tammei don't have to suffer like those in Chitlapcock. So so the secretary has liaised with the complaints division. Mr. Albert Chan, please. Abide by the rules of procedure. The complaints division colleagues said that they can meet with the relevant speakers and perhaps our working staff can escort the villagers to the complaints division to make their complaint. Secretary, do you have any response? Secretary, anything to add from you? No, not for the time being, thank you, Chairman. Our staff can or escort you to the complaints division. And you can meet with our complaints division colleagues. Mr. Cheng Yuxiang has already met with them and their case is really being followed up already. Some members are keen to help out. So let's do something additional, extra here. A lot of members would try to lend a helping hand. Secretary, any supplement? No, no. Complaints division. Please, our working staff, please escort the villagers to go to the complaints division. I will not, I'm not in position to allow you to speak anymore. Sorry, speaker not coming through. Sorry, speaker not coming through.
Okay, we heard you, Mr. Chan. We need to handle Mr. Lang Kai Chang's motion. You can, deputations can leave now. If you need to visit the complaints division, we can have staff lead you there. Au Tammei Village. Let's break for three minutes. First.